Live in five, four.
Good evening, welcome to the September 26th, 2012 North Idaho College Board of Trustees Meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody, to start the meeting, I'd like to have everybody stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have a verification of a quorum and introduction of guests, President Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to call on Dr. Lita Burns, our VP of Instruction, to introduce our new Dean of Nursing and Health Professions.
Thank you. Next minutes, review and approval for the August 29th, 2012 minutes, has everybody had a chance to review them? And if so, any comments or take a motion for approval?
I move to approve the minutes.
There's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second at all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Minutes approved. Mark, there's nobody up for public comment? Okay, no public comment. Moving right along, celebrating success. Joe, I'm gonna turn it over to you to...
Thank you, Mr. Chair, today we have with us Mike Myers, who's a Dean for Technical Education, Marie Price, and Sarah Fladland. And they're here to discuss the recent announcement of being awarded nearly $3 million to support the aerospace industry in North Idaho. So, Mike?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Board of Trustees, President Dunlap. It's a real pleasure to be here to talk about this, it's, we worked very hard last spring to be here. And by the way, I'm not feeling that well, I told Ron, I don't feel well, I'll keep this very short, and he said, "That's great." He didn't clarify which one he was great about, so I'm gonna keep it short. Our first slide, this is kind of an effort by the three of us, and the three of us have very different talents. My effort was in the core of the design of this grant. Marie is essential in doing the details, and Sarah is really the grant, knows the details of the grant. So, we're gonna talk about it in those three ways, but we'll start with Sarah.
Thank you, thanks, Mike. I just wanted to give you a brief, very brief background of where this funding is coming from with regards to this particular grant. This grant, or funding, was made available to the US Department of Labor, or edu, sorry, the US Department of Labor through the Trade Adjustment Assistance Community College and Career Training Grant Program in 2010. This is coming from the 2010 Healthcare and Education Reconciliation Act. And what is happening is that they have invested $2 billion over a four-year period to be awarding $500 million per year to different higher education institutions to promote workforce training. And so, in 2011, North Idaho College partnered with several of the other higher education institutions around the state. We came together and we combined our efforts and submitted a statewide consortia proposal. That proposal was not funded in full, but what we do see as a result from that proposal is our physical therapist assistant initiative that's coming down the pipeline, as well as a summer bridge math remediation program that's being offered through our ABEGED division at the college. And so, in fall of 2011, we knew this opportunity was coming up. We started working on it in January, we submitted it in April, May 24th, and we chose to submit an individual application that focused solely on the aerospace initiative. And we are absolutely delighted and thrilled that it was funded in full. Thanks, Mike.
Go forward on this.
Yeah, oh, there you go.
That's okay. Let me talk about the core of the program, and I want to also, before I go on, recognize the Idaho Department of Labor. Rishi was very instrumental in helping us with this, as well as the Idaho Aerospace Alliance, which is a consortium of a number of companies, so they were very, very instrumental in making this work. As you can see from the slide, in fall of 2013, we basically would like to call this a center of excellence. It really mimics a little bit of the model in Washington State. This is gonna be a center of excellence for aerospace training, which in our thinking, everything we do will be shared statewide. The curriculum is available, the training will be available, so we hope that this is something the state will utilize as part of our grant outcomes. There's four parts of this program. The first part is the general aviation portion, and that's the overview of most of the nomenclature that's used in the aviation and aerospace industry, so we want everybody to have a common language. The next portion of a program is the airframe, and this particular area can lead down the road to a FAA-approved certification, what we call airframe certification. It usually becomes an A, A and P, which is the airframe and power. In this case, we're offering just the airframe, it meets the industry needs here, so we stuck with airframe. The next part is composites. It's a program that will meet a lot of the Northwest, at least our area's composite industry training needs. We've got some great models that we pulled from Kansas and Wichita, and we're working with Washington on some of their deliverables. And then, we have an area called non-destructive testing. It's often abbreviated as NDT, they have level one, level two, level three. We're looking at level one as an outcome, which is a certification of its own. A number of companies beyond aerospace use NDT, which includes Schweitzer ski resorts. They actually do non-destructive testing on a lot of the components in the ski resort, and many, many, many others use this. So, we're looking forward to that. We're gonna also expand our machine technology, which will allow us to work with machining composites, not just the metals that we're currently working with, the composites, the carbon fibers and so forth, which is kind of a special application. The target audience is veterans, TA-eligible workers, and other folks that need retraining or original training. Hopefully, it wraps up into an AAS degree, but it will have outcomes at various places in the program, where you could enter the workplace or come back in the program. So, it has a lot of flexibility, the model's kind of one of the key flexible parts of this whole proposal, so it's a really, I think, robust model. Let me give it to Marie.
When we decided to do the aerospace project, we did a lot of research to determine where the jobs were, because outcomes is key for this grant, we have to show placement, we have to show a certain dollar-per-hour job that individuals are getting into, and also, at the same time, we need to show certificates and degrees as outcomes. So, we really looked at what was the emerging industry in Northern Idaho, and how could we meet those needs? And to that end, we surveyed quite a few companies here, aerospace companies, and the data that they gave us really pointed to a need for skilled workers. For example, what we were told is in, by 2015, they projected 520 new jobs in Northern Idaho, just in aerospace. And that includes mainly Cootney County, but also Bonner County. And then, total jobs in aerospace would be over 1,017,4 is the projection they gave us. And then, working with Olivia Metz at the Department of Labor and through EMSI, we were able to get some economic impact data. The average earnings for the jobs out there in aerospace is about over $43,000. And if you do the multipliers and the earnings, really, the direct economic impact is $34.7 million of those new jobs. And assuming that 520 are retained, over 28 million annually in economic impact. Our key partners in putting this grant together was the Idaho Aerospace Alliance, and that's a newly-formed 501(c)(3) based in Hayden, that is a consortium of aerospace companies. We've now expanded it to Southern Idaho, and so, we're really working on building on a partnership within the whole state that can, you know, really create a broad presence within the state and advocate for aerospace and economic development. Idaho Department of Labor, as Mike said, is a key partner, key ally in helping us get this grant and also partnering and bringing us the information that we need. Our industry partners include Empire Airlines, Unitec, Titan Spring, LA Aluminum, Aeroset, increased river, Cygnus, and Tamarack, and Quest are all in standpoint. And for bridging into bachelor's degree, we're partnering with Lewis and Clark State College.
And that concludes our presentation, any questions?
Questions for guest Ken?
This is a great project, I mean, you're gonna be congratulated on the work that you did on it. I see, though, that it's also gonna bring demands on the college for additional facilities, unless we're gonna turn this room into an aircraft...
We thought about it.
So, what do you have in mind for that?
Joe and Marie actually were out today talking to Greg Delavan and looking at facilities. There are facilities currently available, and that would be certainly a start. We did anticipate that, I anticipated we're gonna get the grant, so we didn't put a lot of red out there, as Joe noticed in the grant, because we do anticipate that the upcoming building projects that we have coming will accommodate this, because I think it's, I think we're gonna have this program around for, probably forever, I hope. Joe, do you wanna...
Yeah, there's space out at the Coeur d'Alene Airport that we looked at, and we still need to talk to the proprietor of that property. There is funding built into the grant for lease for a period of time, so I think facility-wise, we're in good shape.
Is this a one-time grant, is there, are renewals on it, what's the prospect of additional money?
That's a very, a very good question. We were funded in the second round of the TA-CCCT grant program. We will most likely not be eligible for the next round, but we would be eligible for the fourth round. So, a couple of years down the road.
Kristi?
Yeah, I was just curious, how soon will you be advertising these programs to the veterans and the displaced workers?
Well, we just barely announced the program, we have nine students already calling at the office, signed up to get into the program, before we even officially announced the program was there, and we've had a string of calls ever since, so it looks like the interest is there. And so, I don't think we're gonna have any trouble pulling students to this, it looks like, it looks like a lot of interest already.
That's fantastic, congratulations to all your hard work, we're so proud.
Thank you.
Sarah, I had one question for you on the grant process, I actually went online and looked at the grants as they were authorized for the last two years. And it appears that the smallest grant is about, the size we got, about three million, something like that. There's a lot of $20 million grants.
Yes.
Okay, what, and it looks like there are a lot of consortiums working to receive those. So, if, as an example, if we went in as a consortium partner, would we be able to do it now that we received this one? Or are we totally locked out?
Yes, that's a very good point. If we were to choose to go under as not a lead, if you will, as a lead institution of a consortia or as an individual, we could partner the next round under an existing consortia, not existing, a new consortia effort. That said, we, we could do that, and the other, and I've already lost my second point, so, my apologies. That was the main one, does that answer your question?
Sure, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, the, if you're a single institution applying for the grant, the maximum amount you could apply for is $3 million. Under this round, if you're a consortium, the maximum you can apply for is $15 million. And under the first round of the grants, which happened last year, if you're a consortium, you could apply for $20 million. So, that's why we ended up just under the $3 million mark, because we're not part of a consortium with this.
Now, there were some massive grants.
Yes, I would like to also add too, in the first round, Department of Labor really focused on the consortia efforts, and it seems that the focus shifted a bit the second round to provide more individual grants. So, that was also a factor in making that decision as well.
Questions further? Congratulations.
Mr. Chair, I hope that his boss lets him go home.
Yes, Mike, if you're not feeling well, please go home.
Ron doesn't agree, but I'll do it.
Ron's tough. Next up, Special Reports, North Idaho Economic Impact Report, Joe.
Yes, we have Gabe Wrench here today with us, and Gabe is from EMSI, which is an organization out of Moscow, Idaho, and they do economic modeling, and we have asked him to prepare a report on the economic impact of North Idaho College on this region. So, Gabe?
Okay, thank you to the board, and thank you President Dunlap for having us up here, appreciate it. I'm gonna introduce our company, talk about who we work with for about two, three minutes, and then I'm gonna pass it over to Tim. He's a lot smarter than I am, and he's gonna walk us through the results. So, first off, we're an economic firm based out of Moscow, Idaho, and I believe in about 2007, we were the fastest-growing information technology firm here in Idaho. And now, we are currently owned by Career Builder, and, which is a really exciting venture for us. And so, we're still maintaining our branding and our position here in Moscow, Idaho, so really excited about that relationship we have with Career Builder. We work with Department of Labor here in Idaho, University of Idaho, we've worked with NIC for maybe four years, five years for a while. And we work with Spokane Community Colleges, and we're actually an international firm too, so we work in a number of different countries, UK, Australia, and so forth, so. We are an economic firm specifically focused on workforce and education. So, we work with a number of like workforce investment boards, economic development councils, and community colleges. The study that we conducted for North Idaho College, we also did for University of Idaho, it's a economic impact study that basically looks at and quantifies the economic activity that North Idaho College has on the region. And this is a really important study to undertake, because especially in our current economy, education is perceived as a budget item, a cost item, and not an investment. So, these type of studies are really important for what's going on in our current economy. So, Tim's gonna walk you through our methodology, he's gonna walk you through some data, and then we'll open it up for some Q and A. Sound good? Thank you.
All right, well, I'll just mimic what Gabe said, and thank you all for having us up here. I was excited to get to do another project in Idaho. Most of the projects I work on these days are in the UK, and so, it's nice to be able to come home and actually go onsite and visit the colleges, so I'm excited to be here. My goal today, one of the things I want you guys to walk away with is not just an understanding of your impact, I want you to understand how we got to the results that we have. I want you guys to be able to take these reports out and talk about them in an educated fashion with your various stakeholders. So, this is not just about flashing numbers at you and giving you numbers that you can then flash at your legislators. This is more than that. MZ tries to embed itself in colleges so that we are your economics department. And so, we take a very heuristic approach, we want people to walk away educated on what we've done and why we've done it the way we have. So, the study is, consists of two primary components. The first is an investment analysis, where we talk about rates of return, return on investment, net present value, those types of things. And that's done at the state level, and then we look at the economic growth or economic impact analysis, which is going to be for the five counties of Northern Idaho. And I should make mention, when I start here, MZ is not, does not view itself in any way, shape, or form as an advocacy group. We have published results that are below threshold. If there is a college that is a bad investment, we're not shy about saying so. We come at this almost like a financial auditor would come at your books. We're doing an economic audit of your operations. So, with that, we'll jump into the investment analysis, we're gonna start from the student's perspective. It is, I think, the most natural perspective to think of education as an investment, that's why the students are here. They're looking to get something out of it, and they're looking to get more out of it than they put into it. So, if you look at the costs, $95.4 million in costs from your student body. That cost represents not only the students' direct outlays, which would be their tuition and fees, books and supplies, and any other spending, extra spending that they have to incur well at the college. It also includes their opportunity cost, which is the biggest component of this $95.4 million. Opportunity cost is basically the dollars that the students are giving up in order to sit in a classroom. So, every hour that they're in a classroom, that's an hour that they could have been making money somewhere else. So, that's a cost to the student, that's money that they're not realizing. On the benefit side, the students are gonna walk away with a lifetime of higher earnings. So, the costs are all reflective of one year, the benefits are reflective of a lifetime of higher earnings. What we've done is we take that lifetime of higher earnings, that stream of benefits that goes into the future, and we discount it back to present value. That way, we can look at present value benefits and compare it to present value costs. That's where you're getting that 3.6 benefit-cost ratio. We're taking the 341 million that the students are receiving in higher earnings, and we're weighing that, dividing that by the 95.4 million in costs.
Tim?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, just quickly, the 95.4 million, is that per year, or is that...
That is per year, that is for one academic year.
Thank you.
The benefits as well are for one academic year. So, this is not looking at the return or the benefit-cost ratio from a bachelor's degree or an associate's degree or something of that nature, this is looking at one year's worth of learning. The 3.6 is intuitive, I think that when you see the numbers shown this way, you understand where the 3.6 came from, but that's not a natural way to look at an investment analysis. The natural way to look at an investment analysis is the percentage that you, return that you get on an annual basis. So, we are showing a 16.1% annual rate of return on the student's investment. I would caution you not to think of that as a number, I would caution you to think of that 16.1% in light of what your portfolios did last year. That 16.1% is a better return than you're gonna get on most of your private investments. It's very rare that you're gonna get something that high, so the students are really making a killer deal here. I'm gonna go back one slide, actually, there's one other thing I wanted to say about the 3.6. The way the students should interpret that is that if they give NIC $1, NIC is basically giving them back $3.60 in present value terms, that's what they're doing. So, if I was a student, that's a game I would play for quite some time. I'll give you a dollar all day long if you're gonna give me $3.60 back for every dollar I give you. It's a very good return. So, that's the student perspective, I'm gonna jump forward to the taxpayer perspective. We're gonna play basically the same game here. When we look at the taxpayer perspective, we're not looking at this strictly as a public investment. What we're looking at is the taxpayers, the state and local governments, as an investor in the college. So, what money is coming out of the budgets, like Gabe said, most people think of the college as a budget line item. There are costs to the state, there are costs to the local taxpayers, that's true in some sense. There is a cost associated with operating the institution, and what we're showing is that $30.4 million comes out of the public coffers to support the college on an annual basis. But the question is, what gets put back in? That's the side of the story that has been left untold, is what monies come back to the state and come back to the local taxpayers? What monies are put back into the public treasuries as a result of the college's operations? So, the cost side is money taken out of the treasuries. The 44.3 million in benefits that are being put back in on an annual basis are composed of two things. The first one is that when the students get higher earnings, those students then pay higher taxes. So, that broadening of the tax base generates higher tax revenue. And that's the biggest component that we're looking at here in that 44.3 million. But there is another component to the benefits here, and that is the social savings. So, when students become more educated, they're less likely to engage in crime, they're less likely to smoke and suffer the consequences of that. And as a result of these students being more educated, that means that the state doesn't have to pay as much in unemployment insurance, because the students are gonna be employed, more likely to be employed. They're gonna be able to pay less in terms of social costs, like police officers, prisons, those types of things. Those costs to the state will be reduced as a result of the higher education that the students receive. So, those things combined are coming in and giving us a benefit-cost ratio of 1.5. Again, those benefits are discounted to present value. The 1.5 benefit-cost ratio, the first thing people do is compare that benefit-cost ratio to the student's benefit-cost ratio, and they say, "The state's getting 1.5, the students are getting 3, 3.6, why is the state getting such a raw deal compared to the students?" And it's a good question, but I think it's the wrong question. The students are making a private investment and getting a private return. The state is in essence making a public investment, and most public investments don't generate a benefit-cost ratio above one anyways. The story that we like to tell is the public park, right? If you invest in a public park, we think that's a good thing, but the reality is, you have the initial investment in the park, and then you have a maintenance fee that you pay every year after that, but that public park never puts money back into the treasuries. It's a cost-only investment. So, what you're seeing with a benefit-cost ratio above one here is a really good thing, and it's very rare for a public investment to have that positive benefit-cost ratio. So, essentially, what we're saying is that for every dollar that's taken out of the public treasuries, we're putting $1.50 back in. That's 50 cents more than the state had to invest in infrastructure, that's 50 cents on the dollar more that they have to invest in other types of public endeavors. Again, we wanna look at it from an annual perspective, and so, the 5.8% return on investment, again, very strong. We would say that a threshold here is 3%, the state can usually get 3% on their money if they invest it in various ways. So, 5.8%, again, above that 3% is very strong. So, that's the investment analysis. I'm getting ready to jump over to the impact analysis, but I wanna, I wanna see if there's any questions on the investment side first. So, the investment analysis done at the state perspective, the economic impact analysis or growth perspective is done on the five northern counties in Idaho, so we've got a map there. I want you guys to think about this region as we talk about these dollars that are floating around. These aren't dollars just in Coeur d'Alene, it's dollars, we're counting the multiplier effects and the ripple effects as the dollars travel through all five of these counties. So, the first thing that we're gonna look at is the college's operation effects. Most impact studies are gonna stop with the college operations effect, this is gonna be the only thing that they measure. And if it's not the only thing that they measure, it's usually the biggest thing that they measure. So, we're showing $32.9 million in annual impacts from the college's operating budgets, and for how they're spending their money and as it ripples through the economy. And I know that there's gonna be some worried faces up there, because you guys are thinking, "Yes, but we have a budget of $64.7 million. Why is our impact so much lower than our total budget?" And there's reasons for that. So, the first reason is that we're doing this on an income, not a spending basis, okay? So, we're not tallying up receipts from all of the expenditures that the college has made. What we're doing, when we say income basis, the best example is to think of you going out to a car dealership. You go and you buy a new Lexus, you spend $50,000, buy a new Lexus. On a sales approach, we would say that's a $50,000 impact. But we know that most of that $50,000 is going back to Japan, or going back to Detroit, or going back to the headquarters of the manufacturer of the car. So, when you do a sales figure, you're actually inflating the numbers, that's not the true impact that you're having, because most of that money automatically leaks out of your economy. So, that's the first thing we've done, is we've stripped out all of the leakages from your spending. All of the dollars that exit your economy, that five-county economy, all of that is stripped out automatically. The other thing that we do is something called alternative use of funds. This is an adjustment that sounds a little arcane, but it's extremely important. And that is, every dollar that you get from local taxpayers, those taxpayers could have spent themselves. And when the taxpayer spent it, that spending was gonna have multiplier effects too. It was gonna ripple through the economy as well. So, all of that local spending that ripples through your economy, you don't get to claim that. In essence, we're treating you as a pass-through organization for those funds, right? Taxpayers could have spent the money, but instead, they give it to you, and you spend the money. So, when we discount for the alternative use of funds, that strips out a whole bunch of the impacts. When we discount for the income rather than the sales, it strips out a bunch of impacts. But what you're looking at, that $32.9 million is the money that's actually in the region that you get to claim and that wasn't here originally. It's not a rearranging of the furniture, these are actually new dollars to your economy. And if that concerns you, because you still like that $64.7 million budget expenditure side, I would say, think about the $32.9 million in terms of jobs, pitch it in terms of jobs, all right? That's a lot of jobs that you're looking at right there. And again, this, I know presidents like big numbers, but we... And again, this, I know presidents like big numbers, but we want to be accurate, and that's our primary goal. But this isn't the main point of the story anyways. The next thing that we're looking at here is the student spending effect. What we've done is we've limited this to just the students who are relocating to Coeur d'Alene, relocating to the five-county area from outside of it. So if you have out-of-state students that are moving into the community, those students are bringing dollars with them. They're paying for rent, they're paying for food, they're paying for entertainment, transportation, they're paying for all of that stuff, and all of that is new dollars to your economy, dollars that weren't here before. We limit it just to the students who are relocating to the five counties, because if someone is commuting back and forth, their primary expenditures are going to be for their housing, and that's going to be on the other side of that border, the five-county border that we showed before. So just the students who are relocating to the area. $19.2 million, we do the same thing. We're doing this on an income, not a spending basis, but it does include all the multiplier effects from the spending. Again, this is still not the point of the story. The point of the story is not how much money the college can get from the state and from the local taxpayers, and then turn around and spend again. The point of the college is not spending. The point of the college is the education that provides, and that links directly to the workforce. And that's what this next slide is looking at. So the $112.5 million is the real story. We can talk about $32 million in your spending all day long, but the real impact that you're having is that you're producing an educated workforce that goes out and is more productive than it otherwise would be. And this is basically your workforce impact. You can also think of it as your alumni impact. This is the impact that your alumni are having. The way this is calculated, we basically take all of the students that you've had over the past 30 years, and then we net out any of the students that have died, any of the, because they're not generating impacts, any of the students who have retired, any of the students that have migrated out of the region. We're able to track using IRS filings how many people are migrating out of the five-county economy every year, by whether they were filing a tax return here, and then the next year, they filed it somewhere else. We know that they've moved. So we net out death, retirement, outmigration, and unemployment, any of the students that are unemployed. We would net those out. And what we're left with is the stock of human capital that's active in the workforce, that's generating those higher earnings. And that's what's generating this $112.5 million. If you think of it on a credit basis, basically, there's about a million credits that are active in the workforce right now. NIC credits that are active in the workforce, which is significant, especially in light of the fact that this year, about 155,000 credits, 156,000 credits were generated at NIC this year. So to have a million credits in the workforce is a big deal, and that million credits is what's generating this $112.5 million. So annually, your impact on the five counties is $164.6 million, a very healthy return to the local community, the local economy. And I hope that this is enough to satiate your legislators up here, and get them to understand that it is an investment, it's not just a cost. When I've had this discussion before with colleges that are below threshold, these meetings are not very fun. And when a college can come in and shine the way NIC has done here, it's a big win for you guys, and it's nice to see that my home state is doing its job well, and in not misappropriating the funds that it receives. It's good to see competent people in Idaho. So that's it?
Saying that.
I'm vying for a seat in the Senate sometimes, though. If there's any questions, I'm happy to take questions.
Questions?
It's just so well done. I mean, you explained it so well.
It is amazing, the economic impact of an institution. I've heard this many times before, that sometimes communities take for granted what they have. And it's always the question, if you didn't have it, and somebody came to you and said, "We're thinking about putting a college in Coeur d'Alene," would you want it? And that's always kind of the defining factor of whether or not it's something that's viable or not, or contributes. I think North Idaho College definitely is a contributor, as $164 million proves.
Yes. I would actually, there's a great case study, Walla Walla, Washington. Many of you guys know Steve Van Oostdoel at Walla Walla Community College, and he had an uphill battle to fight, because it used to all be about the prison. They gave Walla Walla the choice, "Do you want a prison, or do you want a community college?" And they said, "Prison." And it took a long time before the community college got there. And now that it's there, their economy's actually turning around and doing great things. So...
Yeah, which would you rather have, educated people or incarcerated people? Good point.
Looking at it from the reverse, what would happen if somebody came along and said, "We're shutting the college down"?
Yeah, and that's the approach that we actually take, is what is the economy going to lose if the college closes its doors? We actually ask that question in one of the appendices of the report, and we walk through that. We basically say, "How much benefits does the state actually get to claim? And if the college were to shut down, what happens to the state's budgets as a result?" So we walk through that analysis, too.
We should have had what you shared with us tonight when we were purchasing this Coeur d'Alene property.
Other questions? Thank you very much. This is very informative. It's something that I think we all somewhat knew that, you know, it's such a great investment, but to quantify it, it just gives us that much more ammunition. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Constituent reports. So Julie, you're going to come tell us about your 16% return on your dollar?
Good evening, Dr. Dunlap, chairman, trustees, and guests. Thank you for having time for ASNC here. Since our last meeting, we have been very busy. I will share with you the highlights of what we've been working on. We had some changes to the board and filled the necessary positions, and elected three more senators to our board. Had the opportunity to be part of the League of Women Voters, and talked about the importance of voting. Also, Student Events will be encouraging students to vote and to be informed. We also are holding a forum for those running for the Board of Trustees, and the forum is set for October 23rd. We feel it is important for our students to be a part of this election, and specifically because it impacts them directly. We asked our advisors to give a presentation of what the past members did on the Rec Center. We now have a solid foundation of what has to be done to pursue this project. Also, some other buildings we would like to consider is a one-stop shop for student services, as well as a parking garage. We've heard student concerns about the CityLink stop being removed from campus, and are working to resolve the issue during the winter months. Also, one of our senators is working with students in the technical programs to work with financial aid for students to purchase tools, with financial aid for their respective programs. Clubs are being active on campus, and starting in October, we'll be reviewing the club structure and how we can serve the student population better. Senator Hall is working on a game day event where we will build and foster student school spirit, as well as ASNC awareness. We had our ASNC blood drive with a great turnout. Also, Student Events had a texting and driving simulator that 110 students attended. The ASNC board will be traveling to Eugene, Oregon, for the regional ACY conference from October 11th to October 14th, to learn more about other schools and student governments. Student Events went on their planning retreat, where they scheduled the rest of the events for the semester. Next weekend is also the Day of Service, with eight community service projects and three on campus. There are still spots available to sign up. Are there any questions?
Questions for Julie?
Mr. Chair, she brought up something that I'm so glad she highlighted. Julie, you, ASNC is doing the forum, the candidates forum. And I've had the pleasure of being involved in two of those as a candidate, and they're very well done. And so I was curious, will there be an effort by ASNC to make it clear to constituents that it's a nonpartisan election? And then what kind of education will be done? You mentioned the League of Women Voters. Is there going to be some kind of a voter's guide that's available? So I'm just curious.
Two senators, Senator Chevers and Senator Menzies are working on that project, and they should be sending out information to all of the candidates on what's going on for the forum.
Fantastic. I think it's so important for students to educate themselves, and understand, and certainly read all the information you can, question your sitting trustees, and most importantly, that everyone does understand that it is nonpartisan, and it's about governance, not about party affiliation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, other questions for Julie? Do you have your new senators here tonight?
I do not. I know, I know.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much. Great report. You've got a lot going on. Staff Assembly, Nancy. You're pinch hitting tonight.
Thank you. Chairman Arman, members of the board, President Dunlap. I am Nancy Edwards, and I'm the staff chair for, the vice chair for Staff Assembly, and I'm standing in for Gary this evening. He's asked that I briefly recap a couple of things that have taken place in September. First of all, at the Staff Assembly meeting, we had an overview of the new wellness program, and that was presented by Andrea Wapner of our Human Resources Department. Erin Norville also explained the process for the new professional development fund. Gary gave us an update on campus parking, and the return of a recycling program here at NIC. Staff Assembly also completed their committee assignments for the upcoming year. Gary and I met with President Dunlap earlier this month to discuss the establishment of the Staff Sabbatical Leave Committee and its membership. Alex Harris has been appointed by PC as chair of that committee, and we are finalizing the committee membership this week. In order to meet the application process deadlines, the committee will be getting together soon to develop the application form, et cetera. And we would like to once again thank the board for passing that staff sabbatical policy and procedure. Finally, Gary asked that I thank President Dunlap for the opportunity to speak with him and the other NIC leaders on the NIC Today Show that was filmed last week. That's the end of my report. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Nancy? Yes, Judy.
Tell us about the Today Show.
I wish I wasn't invited, so President Dunlap's going to have to tell you about the Today Show.
George.
Yes, the, it was, we recorded the NIC Today Show, and the focus of that was on our shared governance model. And so we had Gary Stark there to talk about the Staff Assembly role. We had Julie Salinas there to talk about the role of students. And then we had, I'm trying to...
Edry Born.
That's right. Edry Born from the Senate to help describe their role and how we process decision-making in a shared governance model. And then, in our next NIC Today, we're going to have the Faculty Assembly representative. Hopefully, Kathy will be there, and then she'll be the feature on that particular show.
And this is the community television?
It is. I believe it's on Channel 19, if I'm not mistaken, and it airs periodically throughout the month.
So it's probably, it's good that it's the Today Show, not the View, right?
Depends on your point of view.
Thank you, Nancy. Faculty Assembly, Kathy.
President Dunlap, Chairman Arman, Board of Trustees, and guests, thank you for allowing me to present the Faculty Assembly report tonight. At our last Faculty Assembly meeting, Dr. Burns and Dr. Dunlap were our invited guests, and they were able to do a brief introduction, although I think most of the faculty know who they are by now, and they welcomed question and answer. So we had a nice set of questions, and there were some questions about tenure and some other processes. So we really want to thank President Dunlap and Dr. Burns for coming to our meeting. That's very, very nice, especially for our first meeting of the year. I can't believe it's the fifth week of the semester already. It just seems like things have flown by. Time flies when you're having fun, right? Committees are really actually finalized sort of kinda. We are constantly looking for ways to serve the campus, and we have our standing committees, but we've also had recently some opportunities for faculty to serve in addition to the standing committees and the college committees that we have. And one of the initiatives that President Dunlap asked us to look at is the Division Chair process of selection, and term limits and things like that. It's just a process that is not necessarily consistent across campus, and so he has asked the faculty, and thank you very much for asking the faculty to take the lead on just researching what's going on right now, and coming up with some consistent processes and procedures for that. In addition, we discovered that there hadn't been a new faculty handbook for, I don't know, like 30 years or something. I think the last one was 1984. So we understood that that had been put on the back burner, because staff is very, very busy. So we offered to take that, and we have a faculty group that are working on a new faculty handbook. And what's really exciting about that is, and I have to give a shout-out to John Trumbull, he's a relatively new English faculty, and he is all about doing this with technology. So in other words, we will have a faculty handbook that is dynamic. So when things change, we'll be able to change that, and it will be up to date always. So we're going to house that in our portal system, which is available to all faculty, and he's going to call it Facultypedia, kind of like a Wikipedia kind of idea, where people can update things, and then there'll be monitors to make sure that the things that are updated are accurate. So really looking forward to that. I think that's a great idea. We also have been asked to put together an e-learning advisory group. We feel that it's important that the things that come out of e-learning be looked at from a faculty and instructional perspective, and thank you to Dr. Burns for taking the lead on that. So just today or yesterday, I don't remember, I've sent so many emails out the last couple days, we selected the group. We had a lot of interest in, from faculty serving on that, to serve on that group, and we selected four full-time faculty members and two part-time faculty members to serve on an advisory group for e-learning. So they're, in fact, I think it was just this morning, we put their names in a hat and drew a very scientific, randomly selected drawing. So that group is getting up and going. We also, the faculty are working on a task force with Dr. Burns on the dual-credit, things that are going on on campus with dual-credit, so faculty have a problem with that, and also accreditation efforts. And thank you, ASNC, for asking a faculty member to serve on, as a member of the panel for the forum, for the Board of Trustees forum. So Pat Lippert, who some of you may know or remember, is going to be our faculty representative on the panel for the forum, for the Board of Trustees. So thank you very much. In addition, they asked me to get input from faculty as regards to questions. So I sent that email out today, and I've asked them to get that input back to me by October 10th. We should have that for you for your forum. So thanks again for asking for our input. I would like to introduce my wonderful Faculty Assembly Vice Chair, Christina Edmondson. Christina, could you please stand up? So hopefully, if I don't make this look too painful, you'll see Christina up here next year. And last but certainly not least, our next meeting will be Thursday, October 11th, and I want to thank e-learning for giving us the ability, through Blackboard, to have an online meeting every month. And this is what this means. Instead of doing IVC, where you have to go to a room that has the IVC capability, any faculty member, and it is restricted to faculty members, but any faculty member can log into their Blackboard, they can watch the meeting live, they can have input. So people in Sandpoint, Bonners, Silver, I had people who were homesick, I had the graphics design people out in Post Falls, all involved at our meeting last month. It was very exciting. And they can input their opinion... And they can input their opinions, their vote and everything through the online meeting feature. And we had a monitor monitoring those. And we'll figure, we were, the, the sound was a little off, so we're gonna figure all that out, but the technology is there. And not only that, but that meeting was recorded. So for those faculty members who've never been able to attend a meeting because they have class or whatever, nursing people or doing clinicals in the hospital, they will be able to watch those meetings, the recorded meetings and be able to give us feedback. So I, I just can't thank e-learning enough for putting that together for us and I think it's just gonna be a great use of our technology. So with that, I will entertain any questions.
Any questions for Kathy?
I give Nancy her glasses back.
Kathy, question on the Blackboard. Is that just a web-based system where you can just log on from anywhere?
Yep, anywhere. Anybody, anywhere you have internet access.
So if you have internet, you can log in and is their password coded so that?
It's, what, what they've done is they've put together, it's called a group within, it's sort of like a class, but they call it a group, within Blackboard. And the only people that are, have access to that group are faculty members. So they, because we all have a Blackboard account, all you have to do is log into Blackboard with your regular username and password and it's just a link. And you just click on it and there it is.
Wow, that's great.
And, and the other thing, great thing about that is that now I will just post all of our minutes and our agendas, any documents that faculty need to see prior to the meetings or after the meetings, doc, documents that come up. So all of that will be housed in that space. So faculty know where to go, know where to find it. And what's nice about that is it is, you know, if there were some conversations of a sensitive nature, which can happen, they are password protected. They are protected in terms of only faculty being able to view them.
Great job.
Yes, thanks.
Wonderful. Thank you. Senate, John Tottler.
Good evening, Chair Arman, President Dunlap, Board of Trustees and everyone else that's, that's out here tonight. Well, we had our first Senate meeting of the year and that's, that was exciting. Gotta give a, give a big thanks to, to Matt and the Student Union crew to setting us up downstairs. It's just nice to have a really functional meeting space. It really is, it makes a big, a big impact on, on how much we can get done. There were a lot of new faces, so we spent some time to introduce everyone and, and got to know who was, who was who a little bit. And, and then we got down to business. Our, our first order of, of business for this year was the renaming of the Fort Sherman Park. And I'm sure that you're gonna hear a little bit more from Vice President Browning on that in the, in the background. And so I'll keep it short here, but in regards to that, Mark gave a great presentation in regards to the background and the name choice and why it was chosen and so on and so forth. And there was a short discussion and a unanimous endorsement by the College Senate. So I would expect that that will be in front of you guys very soon. After that, some things that are coming, that are, that are coming our way. We spent some time making sure we had everyone in, in the executive committee roles and so that they knew what their assignments were and, and were up to speed. And we've also been notified by President Dunlap's office that the reduction in force policy will be coming our way in October. And so at the, at this time, that, that policy is in front of the assemblies. They're getting another shot at it. They've had, they've seen it a few times, but we're gonna give them one more chance to take a look and then it will be on the Senate agenda for our upcoming meeting, which will mean, hopefully it will be on to you very soon. And I know that there's been a lot of work put into that over the last few months. We've been talking about reduction in force in the Senate for a solid year, I would say, back and forth. And so we're looking forward to seeing some closure in that, in that process and, and that coming our way. In, in the, in the technology theme, which seems to be a theme in the reports this evening, we're also exploring some technology that will, that will help the Senate function. We've got, I've met with Andreas Berger from the IT Department and the Senate will have what's called a team site on the North Idaho College Portal. And it does a few things for us. First and foremost, it, it ensures that there's one draft and one draft only. There's one, there's one final product up there. And that was a concern that I had as the incoming chair. And so that will be solidified in there. That will only be edited by myself and Mr. John Trumbull, who's also contributing to the Senate as well. So a good motivated faculty member there that, to help me out in organizing that site and making sure that everyone has access. And it'll be another way for us to communicate and stay organized. And, and again, something that folks have access to everywhere where they're, where they're doing that. And with that, that's all I have. Any questions?
Questions for John?
John, it seems to me the last time you gave a report, you were going to have a Senate meeting out at the outdoor pursuits location on the beach. And I'm wondering, why are you retreating inside now?
Right, right. There's a, just mainly the issue of, of, of distraction, I would say. I found that, well, everyone was really happy to be there once they got their ice cream. They didn't really care what I had to say. So I think they were, they were on to taking in the lovely view that we have down there. So we'll have to get back down there though at some point.
It was always spring.
That's right.
Spring is great. Other questions for John? If not, thank you, John. Appreciate it. Thank you for the constituents for your reports. They were very, very good, very informative. It just shows how active, I mean, we're five weeks into school and everybody's hit the ground running, so it's always, it's always amazing what happens on this campus. Executive reports led off by Ron Dorn.
Good evening to the Board Chair, the Board Members and our President. We're gonna take a much easier topic right now. We're gonna talk about trash. So, as you know, the college belonged to the Cootenay County Recycling Program for another, for a number of years. They kinda did away with that and took our, our dumpsters away, which is our recycle, our recycling effort. And that basically put a 50% increase in our costs because that's what they estimate went back into landfill. So we were hunting around for new programs so we could continue the recycling program on campus. And this hasn't been rolled out on campus. It will in October. But we have a new program in place with waste management, which is One Stream Recycling. I think you've all probably heard about that, where they, they built the plant I had over in Spokane. And we don't have to separate the recycling out anymore. It can be put in one point and they will take care of the separation of the recycling so we can mix paper, aluminum, cardboard and plastic in one bin now. Should make it easier to deal with. For this new program, it's gonna take a lot of help from everybody and maybe we get points for the wellness program for this because people are gonna have to take their recyclables to a common point in each building, probably in each floor, and then our fiscal plan is going to pick those up and cart them off to the recycling containers outside, which Waste Management will pick up. Bill McElver will really roll this out in October. He, he's been pretty busy, but he'll roll this out this month. There'll be a lot more notice going out to the faculty and staff on this. And really what it'll do for cost-wise, it'll save us, with the cancellation of the program, it'll save us almost $30,000 a year in landfill costs by participation in this program, by, by getting involved in this new program. So it's, it's a good point. It's a budget item. It's a positive budget item and, and it'll make the campus a healthy appearance, obviously the campus, and it'll, it'll, it'll get participation of faculty, staff and students involved in this process. And, you know, who knows where it can go from there? So that's my report for tonight. Are there any questions? I'd be glad to answer them.
Excellent program. Questions for Ron? Ron, why, why did the county take away or discontinue the recycling program? Do you, do you have a reason for that? And second of all, was there not, we used to get reimbursed for the recycling that we turned in. Wasn't that the case?
Some, some minor amount, yes.
Yeah, a little bit. It wasn't much, but...
And I don't know, I would have to, Bill, I'll get an email out to you why they did that. I don't know why they, why they canceled that, but they, it was on very short notice that it happened. You know the green containers we had? We had them on Hubbard and some other places on campus. I mean, they were there one week and the next week they're gone. And, and I, I don't, I don't have that information, but I can get it, why they, why they stopped it. But I think this is gonna...
No, no, go ahead.
I think this is gonna, really by not having to separate and have those two or three containers in, in all the hallways, this is, you know, gonna actually improve the physical appearance of our campus. But it's gonna make so much easier for all of you and me to participate in this program. It, I, I think it's just gonna be a good thing for the, for the college and obviously for the community.
Well, I just remembered Asnic was very involved in the Go Green program and I'm curious what happened with their involvement. Maybe they weren't even aware that, that bins were taken away.
I don't think you were, were you, that, that had been taken away? Cause it, it was done quickly. And I, and I think it was, well, it was done in the summer, obviously, you know, while you, while you folks were basically gone. And no, they didn't know a whole lot about it and they, they did wanna participate. The students were very helpful in that program. And I don't know if Bill's had contact, Julie, with y'all or, or not, do you?
I know that we still have our bins that we purchased years ago, but I don't know anything about them.
Chairman. They were also removed from the public schools throughout the Cootenay County.
It had something to do with, well, obviously it had something to do with money or, or their, the cost involved for them to do it. So I mean, I'm really glad that this, you know, this became available and Julie, I'll have Bill, I'll have Bill get in touch with you and we'll work on that.
Great. Thank you, Ron. Vice President Strachan, Lita.
Board Chair Arman, members of the board, President Dunlap. Before I get started this evening, I have to admit to making a rookie mistake this, this evening, despite receiving good instruction from Andy before the meeting started. When I introduced Christie, I wasn't at a microphone. So for the benefit of our viewers, I would like to repeat Christie Doyle's name and welcome her again to North Idaho College. Just wanted to make sure I said that. For my report this evening, I would like to provide you an update on our preparation for our accreditation site visit that will occur this spring. As you may recall, NIC was one of the colleges that was elected to implement Northwest Commission on Colleges and Universities Accreditation Process in a compressed fashion. So a seven-year cycle has been compressed into three years. We submitted our one-year report, drafted our three-year report, and now are preparing our five-year report and our seven-year comprehensive report. Under the leadership of Karen Rupel, an accreditation review team has been formed. The team is composed of a broad section of faculty, staff and students. Each team member has been assigned an area of responsibility related to the various departments and division on campus. The team members are also assigned to the self-study report to review, for specific areas of self-study report to review. The goal is to ensure there is as much input from as many people possible to that report. We want the report to truly reflect North Idaho College. An ambitious timeline has been established so that the report will be ready to present to the board in January. The Executive Committee will take input from the board and finalize the report to have it ready for submission to NWCCU in early February. Our site visit is scheduled for March 25th through the 27th, 2013. With that, I would take questions.
Questions for Lita. It's accreditation time again. Seems like it's almost a continuum. It's almost like elections. You just get done with one, you start over again.
And with the new process for NWCCU, that is the intent of this, these cycles. We're not going to develop a report that sits on a shelf for a number of years and then come back and, and try to revive the, the report from the shelf. They want it to become a living document and so that's why they put us into these cycles and, and will be expected to really have that document be a living document.
Great. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lita. BP Community and Government Relations, Mark.
Members of the board, I'm going to, thank you for having us this evening. I'm gonna bring the timer over here with me so that they can't cheat on the time. But you're looking at a copy of our alumni letter. That is the result of the good folks that we're gonna see on the screen here. Everyone that works in our department is certainly, they just, they flat out do the very most, that they, they just continually amaze me. Stacy Hudson is our director. Nick Greneers, our marketing coordinator. Tom Green, Chris Pfeifer, Melissa Moini. Those are the folks that work on the web and, and Tom is primarily responsible for internal communications and also media events. Heather Butler is one of the most talented graphic artists that you will ever see in the inland northwest and we're very fortunate to have her. Of course Lynn keeps us in line and works with the, all the folks that come through, through the doors looking for parking permits and we would not be anywhere without the person that I refer to as Pepper Potts. Keeps us all in line. I, I wanted you to be able to see some faces with, with the good work. I come here every month, I give you a piece to, to look at that they've done. You, you see the articles in the newspaper, you see the beautiful signs on campus. And then you have to look at this. These are really the people that, that get everything done and they are a tremendous team and they're highly sought after. They are highly decorated. They have won awards nationally, regionally and in the state. And they, if you follow social media at all, and I know Trustee Wood does, they are hashtag superstars and hashtag amazing. So I just, I wanted to add that. Very quickly, John mentioned the park renaming. We are working on that as part of our nine-point agreement with the tribes. We'll bring that to you next month for a first reading for the change in the Fort Sherman Park and also in the Fountain Park. We're starting work on that now, but we've been in very close contact with the tribes. They've been very supportive. They endorse it and we've run it through campus now and they'll be ready to bring to you for a first reading next month. The Healthcare Summit that we've been supporting will start tomorrow. We expect to have a number of CEOs throughout the Pacific Northwest coming from Seattle, Portland and all points in between to attend that. We've been very involved with the accreditation effort. And then I just wanted to, the, the point about Blackboard and being able to hook up, I just wanted you to know that a couple of months ago, we showed you the app, which is available now for Droid. I just searched for the University of Idaho. Not only do they not have a mobile Blackboard, they don't have a mobile app, period. So again, NIC leads the way and that's thanks to these folks here and what they've been able to do. So if there's any time left, do I have any fluff, Graydon? I'm done. Ron says I'm done. I would, despite what Ron says, I'd be happy to take some questions.
Questions for Mark. Hey, Mark. Get your native tongue out here. Tell us the name of the, of the, the parks.
Can I look it up?
Well, it should just flow off your tongue, right?
Chiemkuwep, from Headwaters. And if that's not it, I'm trying to say it convincingly enough that you think it is, so...
I'm sold.
I understand that the T is not, it's not a hard pronunciation on the T, so...
Mr. Chair, I just had a question and one of Mark's duties coming up in October. I guess we'll start looking at our legislative gathering?
Yes, we will. In fact, I was just emailing with Senator Kiel as the meeting started on some of the things that have been put into the higher ed budget and answering some questions there. We'll have a legislative gathering here and we're certainly going to be, you're just gonna have to timeout your clock there for a bit. The, the economic impact study was something that we really pushed for out of our office when President Bell was here and she was gracious enough to, to fund that out of the President's office because we really felt that not only did we need, as, as the gentleman here said, to establish that higher education in particular is an investment, but we need to show what that investment can do for the state. It is very much a competition in terms of, there's a finite amount of money and it's, and it is a shrinking pot of money, even though our economy is slowly growing. There's over $155 million of one-time money from fiscal 12 to fiscal 13 statewide that has to be replaced. So even though sales tax receipts are up, property tax receipts, you know, the values are starting to grow, we are actually in a hole from last year to this year in terms of the state perspective. So, but yes, we'll be working with our legislature, local legislators as soon as the election is over to get those who are reelected and the new electees in here.
Well, we usually do our social with them about October, don't we?
Late November, early December, I think it was last year.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll definitely wait until after the election this year.
And has, yeah, I know, it's been an issue in the past. Has your committee started meeting?
We, the Legislative Committee, I think, is set to, we, to meet a week from Monday, our campus committee. We just got fully staffed thanks to Kathy and Nancy. They push folks and we got, we have a full committee now and we're ready to meet.
Great. Thank you.
I think that's it, Mark. Thank you very much. You've ran over and taken all of Graydon's time, but besides that...
Thank me later.
Vice President for Student Services, Graydon Stanley.
He's the one guy on campus who's bigger than I am, so I have to be nice.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Dunlap, another guest. I had a fairly extensive report to give to you tonight, but unfortunately because of Ron and Mark, both at times real limited, so I'll just stick to these few remarks. Traditionally, this is the month that we give the Fall Enrollment Report to the board and to the community. And as I told you at last month's board meeting, that that date has changed. The state's asking for that to be reported on October 15th and that's really a better date to look because then it's beyond all those other factors that change our enrollment. You might recall last month that I talked to you about, we still had a drop for non-attendance, we had drop for non-payment. We still had registration of dual-credit students as well. All those dates have passed and in fact, I can give you just some quick numbers where we stand at this point. This is in comparison to the 10-day count that we have traditionally looked at. And then October 15th, I'll come back with a more extensive report and PowerPoint for you then. Compared to the 10-day count last year, we are 1.03% up in FTE. While we certainly would like for that to have been a little higher, that actually bucks the trends for the state. If you, and not everybody has reported publicly now, but if you look at the other institutions, I think you'll find that that's probably going to be the largest FTE increase in the state. So we feel very good about that now. We had a 3.1% decrease in headcount, so the translation, of course, would be that we have fewer students taking more classes. You know that the way FTE is calculated is it's the total number of credits divided by 15 is that full-time equivalent. And so again, up a little over 1% in FTE, down about 3% in headcount. I have a chance to show you much more detail at the October board meeting, but I didn't look initially at any statistical significance in there. And in fact, as you move across the board and all the different programs and all the different factors you might be interested in seeing, everything mirrors about that, those same statistics, down a bit in headcount, up a bit in FTE. The one place that was really significant is we had approximately a 10% increase in FTE for dual-credit students. And that's a real positive for us. Tomorrow, we're convening for the first time a meeting of the Enrollment Management Task Force. Dr. Burns and myself are co-leading that group and we have representatives from both faculty and student services that are chairing three different committees. One focused on enrollment, another on retention, and another one on completion, graduation, and success. We are also asking members of the student body to be a part of that, some of our students and members of the community as well. So we'll be reinvigorating that process starting tomorrow. At the end of October, members of the instructional division and members of student services will be attending a three-day event in Boise, the Complete College Idaho. Most of you are familiar with that initiative in the state. We'll be sharing that. The president shared that with us recently at a president's cabinet retreat. We're talking about it in student services. I know the instructional division has spent a lot of time on it. And we will have a strong attendance at that event in Boise. Dr. Burns and myself just attended the New Educators Reception hosted by the Chamber of Commerce just earlier this evening. And it was a great testament to North Idaho College. What was said there, the Idaho Teacher of the Year, many of you recall, was Erin Linz from the Coeur d'Alene School District here. And she spoke and did an outstanding job and part of what she mentioned was she was so thankful for having had the opportunity to be in Coeur d'Alene, moved here when she was 15 years old, raised her family, came back as a non-traditional student. And you know where she started her education, was at North Idaho College. Completed it through the University of Idaho and just this last year was selected as the Idaho Teacher of the Year. So real credit to, and through University of Idaho in Coeur d'Alene. So real credit to the efforts being made and working with institutions together here. On a personal note, I want to let you know that my house in Twin Falls, just after a month, closed today at 3:30. I started renting the house and so I'm contributing to the local economy. I'm bringing all that money, I'd love to say we made much, but not true, and bringing it to northern Idaho. That concludes my report unless you have any questions that I could answer.
Welcome. Any questions for Grayden? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I ask?
Yes.
I'm not sure, President Dunlap or Grayden, I know we had some troubles here on campus with campus security. You want to address how that's worked out, what we did to deal with it?
Sure. We had, last week, a student on campus who, because of some demonstrated behaviors and then some conversations with a counselor downtown, was perceived as a potential threat to the campus. And so law enforcement, including Cootney County and Coeur d'Alene Police Department, came to campus. They set up a perimeter and then in the process of trying to discover what had happened, they also discovered the fact that he had two felony warrants in Washington State. And so there was concern about the safety of the campus. And so for a considerable period of time, we established an emergency operations center. The Coeur d'Alene Police Department did, we participated in that. And we tried to ensure that the campus was in fact safe. They had, the police department had cruisers on the freeway that had ID verification of the license plates so that if the young man did come back from Washington State to Idaho, that he would be apprehended. And so that effort has gone on for about a week. The response by the Coeur d'Alene Police Department, by the Cootney County Sheriff's Department, was absolutely spectacular. And we appreciate those relationships that we have. And I think we did a very good job in ensuring that the campus was safe.
And the end result is the person is still out and about?
That's correct. If I may, for those that don't know, I am, my day job is I'm a sergeant with the Coeur d'Alene Police Department, assigned to the Detective Division. And I was kind of knee-deep in this, working with Grayden and with Joe. And this campus just did a fabulous job of working with their local law enforcement, Stacy Hudson and her crew. They did everything they could to get the information out. And, you know, there were some decisions made that were strategic and they were correct decisions. And at no time did we feel the campus was at risk. We had real-time information that led us to believe that this person was in Spokane. We had really good information on that. And had that changed at all, I'm certain that President Dunlap and Grayden would have maybe gone a different direction with law enforcement. But we were very, very secure in our assessment and we had a number of officers on this campus hoping to make the students, faculty, and staff feel secure as well. So he is still wanted, still is not been taken into custody. His attorney is well aware of the search for him, has been in contact with his client. And he has chosen not to turn himself in, but every indication is he's still over in Washington.
So this was kind of a welcome to North Idaho for our new president. But also, I think, as board members and community, we wanted to be sure we had a system in place, which you've now tested more than we wanted, but it worked.
Well, in addition to that, I've made it a requirement for the president's cabinet to take the FEMA Incident Command Structure Training just for this very reason. So that we understand clearly how to establish an emergency operations center, how to appoint an incident commander, and then turn that over to the local police or fire department, whichever assumes command of that. And then in October, we will be doing a tabletop exercise with another scenario to walk through this. So we feel that we're well-prepared and are getting more prepared for any kind of an emergency that there may be on campus.
We hope there none, but thank you for being prepared.
Other questions? Thank you, Grayden.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if I might add, although President Dunlap already told you, I just want to reiterate how wonderful the Coeur d'Alene Police Department and Cootney County sheriffs were in working with us. I was having a meeting ironically enough on Monday morning when all of this occurred down at the Coeur d'Alene City Police Department. And then all of this occurred, we came on to campus. We've had contact with them every day. In fact, Mark Browning and I met with the chief and the assistant again today. So they've been fabulous in their communication, their support. Trustee Wood's been a partner in this process too. So it's really been a great effort, all of us working together to ensure a safe college and a safe community.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you both. Joe.
Mr. Chair, trustees, students, and colleagues, I have three things that I'd like to report on this evening. First of all, our Sandpoint Outreach Center has fully moved from the Ponderay Mall site to the new renovated high school in Sandpoint. And we are open for business there. Earlier this week, Rayell Anderson and myself met with the former mayor of Sandpoint and a group of individuals because the one thing that is still needed is a wet science lab. And so we had Peter Zayo, our divisional chair for science, craft out what would be required to install a wet lab. And we met with this group in Sandpoint to initiate a $100,000 fundraising effort so that we could fund those particular items. And the intent is that that wet science lab will be up and running this summer or this next fall. And that will allow us to offer a complete A degree with the science requirements in Sandpoint. And then with our four-year partners, we're hoping that through that articulation that we will also be able to, with them, offer a baccalaureate in Sandpoint. The community in Sandpoint has been overwhelming in their support for us and our new facility. And that new facility provides us the opportunity to increase capacity and increase our offerings. The grand opening of that facility is the 1st of November and I would encourage anyone who can attend to attend and take a look at that. And Max Mendez, one of our faculty members, will be leading a choir concert as part of that grand opening. Earlier this past week, I had a retreat with the president's cabinet as well as our deans so that we could review some priorities and begin to develop an educational master plan for this campus. And so we reviewed the Complete College Idaho Initiative and looked at the five strategic initiatives within that and then what North Idaho College needed to do to support that initiative. We also reviewed the voluntary framework for accountability, which is a data collection process that we and the other two community colleges in this state have agreed to look at implementing, which will allow us to tell our story with common language, using common data, and be able to compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges. We also, out of that retreat, will have a programmatic view of what the net, of what our needs will be in the near future. We also reviewed some budget-related items and restructuring, how we charge for credits and dual-credit. And the end result of that will be a presentation about facilities and an educational master plan to this board. Not at the next board meeting, but probably the one following that. And that will lay out a two-year plan for our college as a roadmap on how we're going to accomplish those goals. And then the last thing I'd like to report on is that earlier this week, myself and the two other community college presidents met in Twin Falls and made a presentation to the JFAK, which is the Joint Financial Committee for the Legislature, and presented our budget requests to them. This is the first time that the three community colleges have spoken with one voice to the legislature about funding priorities. And the things that we reviewed with them is a common mission statement for the three community colleges that I know we are all looking at and potentially will adopt. We talked about dual-credit, the impact and the structure for that within the state. We also presented to the JFAK an overview of the voluntary framework for accountability that we are looking at implementing with all the three colleges. The budget request that North Idaho College presented to JFAK was those items above our base budget requirements. And I just want to review those four items with you. The first thing we requested was $350,000 to support dual-credit offerings. And that would be used to increase the number of college-level core classes offered in the high schools, providing career and course advising to dual-credit students, to increase the pool of high school teachers who can be dual-credit instructors for NIC, and to guarantee that college courses taught in the high school are in fact college-level courses. The second item was related to the Complete College Idaho Initiative as it relates to our Sandpoint Center. And we asked for $302,000 there to provide a more comprehensive set of services for that facility. It also would allow us classroom space to accommodate programs that have been requested by that community. And it will house us with our area agency on aging and those programs. And it centrally locates us across the street from our Sandpoint Head Start program. The third item we requested funding for was about $96,000 for a veteran center or an expanded veteran center here on the NIC campus. And many of those veterans returning from combat experienced traumatic brain injuries or PTSD and other physical and emotional issues. And so we want to be able to provide them an environment that is conducive to learning and that they are familiar with and that will allow them a more independent approach to education and job success. And then lastly, the one item that we requested was a half a million dollars. And this relates to one of the things that Julie Salinas mentioned. And that is to have a one-stop shop for our student services. Now, we currently offer registration, admissions, student accounts, and financial aid in one facility. But what's missing from that is our advising, testing, and dual-credit operations. And so this would allow us to funding to consolidate that and really have a true one-stop shop for North Idaho College. That concludes my report and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Joe? Judy.
I'm delighted to hear that you were working with the other two community colleges. Because as we learned from the Complete Idaho, Complete College Idaho report, there's a lot more expectation of community colleges to be delivering a lot more programs. And with our effort with K-Tech, where we hope to have lots of folks in our pipeline, I think we're going to have some economic challenges here to provide all the services that hopefully the consumers are requesting in the budget we have. And so I think helping the state see the unification that's occurring is a long step forward. I'm delighted to hear because that's one I've been plugging a while. But more importantly is that we will be more cost-effective with our students. And I think that will probably help demonstrate to the legislature that we can be more effective when we all work together.
Well, we certainly believe that there are some economies of scale and clearly there's some synergies that will emerge from that. In relation to Complete College Idaho, the elephant in the room, if you will, is that there is this mandate with the five strategic initiatives, but there is yet to be determined what kind of resources will be forthcoming from the state to support that initiative and whether or not that will become an unfunded mandate.
And as I recall, the major initiative is one of stipulating that folks between the ages of 24 and 35?
Well, the goal for Complete College Idaho is that students between the ages of 24 and 35 by the year 2020, that 60% of that population will have a degree or a certificate. Now, that's a very ambitious goal because currently in Idaho, only 31% of that age bracket possesses a degree or certificate. And so the question becomes, can we achieve that goal? And if we can't achieve that goal, what kind of a dent can we make in that? So it's a very difficult challenge. And some of those five initiatives that are part of that Complete College Idaho include strengthening the pipeline, reforming remediation, structuring for success, and reward for performance. And so those are some of the things that we will have to come to grips with. And we've already started that with that retreat that I mentioned. And of those five initiatives, we began looking at... And of those five initiatives, we began looking at what can NIC do to support each one of those.
And it seems to me it also weaves back into what we're hearing from the students about a one-stop-shop. How can we be effective in helping students, not only just those right out of high school, but those returning who may not be as familiar with how to make, how to use the system we've all helped pay for? Big project, if we're going to double from 30 to 60%?
Yep.
In six, five years, six years by the time this happens, I think is huge.
Yep.
We're glad you're here to lead us on the way.
Thank you.
Joe, it's interesting to hear that your three presidents have now proposed or actually introduced these concepts to the JFAC. These are projects that we started as the board chairs, working together about two years ago. And we worked it together as the, started as chairs, went to the three boards, and then to the three presidents. What it shows is that cooperation works.
Yeah.
For many years, there was no cooperation, and it was a matter of everybody, you know, one person fending for themselves. And as we're working cooperatively now, it seems like we're getting a lot more done. Even the funding mechanism is, you know, we dialed in and had the conference call. It was very collegial, but we're all working together. We all understand there's certain things we have to do for the benefit of all three of us, and if we work together, we'll get those accomplished. That aside said, I was going to make an announcement in my later report, but we are trying to get another meeting of the three boards here sometime in October. So we're still fumbling for dates here, but if we, we're probably going to have something in October to get together. So if anybody does have anything they want to bring up to have on that agenda, do let me know so that we can discuss that and keep the process moving forward because, as we can see from your report, it shows results at the end.
Well, it does, and the legislators that are members of that JFAC were extremely complimentary about the fact that we were speaking with one voice on behalf of the community colleges and the students in this state, trying to influence common initiatives and create some economies of scale. And so they were very, very appreciative of that level of cooperation.
Yes. Ken?
I guess in that vein, I wanted to ask you, in your discussions with the other presidents, have you talked about establishing a common basis, a common process for the dual-credit programs in terms of both the cost of those programs as well as how they're structured?
Yes, we have, and that's a very good question because if you look at the universities, if you look at the community colleges, each one has structured them differently, not only where and how they're taught, but also the cost associated with that instruction. And just by way of example, the, some of the universities charge $65 per credit hour for those courses taught in the high school. For the courses taught on campus, they charge their full tuition rate, which ranges from $250 to $350 per credit. And then the online dual-credit instruction also may have a different rate as well. And so what we've discussed is how do we jointly create some synergies to support the state so that we are more uniform and that we serve our region better? For example, we have Southern Idaho College that is teaching dual-credit courses in some of the northern counties because we were a little late to the party, and we've agreed that that is not cost-effective for them. They don't necessarily want to be there, and so maybe that's a role that NIC should assume. And so the answer to your question is yes, we have discussed how we can standardize what we're doing and be more effective in how we're doing that.
Does that include the qualifications of the instructors for the dual credit? I mean, because I think there were some differences between the qualifications from the different...
Yes, there is discussion about that, and what the accreditation body says is that if you are going to have someone offer your transfer courses, they should have the same credentials as you require on campus. So we require a master's degree for individuals that teach transfer courses. At the university, although a PhD may be the instructor of record, we oftentimes have TAs, teaching assistants, that offer those courses that have a baccalaureate degree. So there are differences in qualifications, but the community colleges are united in the fact that a master's degree is what's required.
You know, making that, because the dual-credit has such potential to reach across the state, having some commonality just makes so much sense, and I'm really happy to hear the, you're reaching out to try and make that common across the state with the other institutions.
Well, and I've also met with Hazel Baumann to discuss how we can go about this and work together with the K-12 system, and I know Lita Burns is meeting with their folks in charge of instruction so that we're not duplicating efforts.
Judy?
Then how does this, as Ken is asking, and we're talking with students, how does this translate when we're doing online classes? Because as you described, some are being done by online, some are in person sort of thing, as well as off-campus and on-campus. So we have three different delivery methods at this time?
Right. That's exactly right. And in the high schools, there's a requirement that a high school student have two online courses. Well, if you can package that so that they, the two online courses count for a high school credit as well as a college credit, and we can jointly develop that and share that with the K-12 system, then there's some synergy, economies of scale, and I think everybody wins in that environment.
Joe, how are we going to price that?
Well, that's a good question, and right now, we charge $65 per credit hour, but the $65 per credit hour was initially designed for instruction given in the high school, and it did not apply to online or on our campus instruction. And so one of the things we're looking at right now is whether or not that should change and how that should change. By way of example, College of Southern Idaho, two years ago, for students who attend dual credit on campus, they now charge the full tuition rate as opposed to that $65 per credit hour. So that's something we're reviewing right now.
But Joe, if we're going to do the two online courses, is there not funding that follows those two courses because that's part of the student comes-first program? And my understanding is through the student comes-first program that the student has the ability to choose where to take those online classes, so there has to be some compensation that follows those.
But that would, that would, the funding does not automatically follow the student. So let me give you an example. The way that the K-12 system is funded is based on ADA, which is the average daily attendance. And so the community colleges and the universities have the authority to take some of that ADA if the students come, if we provide instruction to those students. But what we have agreed is that for instruction delivered at the high school, we would charge $65 per credit hour and leave the ADA alone without impacting the K-12 system. And so what we need to do is, if we jointly offer an online dual-credit course, is to come to an agreement on how the funding will follow. Do we charge a separate per-credit hour rate, or does that impact the ADA? We would prefer not to impact the ADA because that becomes then divisive between the K-12 system and the community college system.
This is just an observation. I want to compliment you and some of the other reports tonight. You know, when I first started out as a trustee here, everybody was throwing acronyms out, and my head was buzzing, and I would interrupt and ask, could you please tell me what ADA means or, and a number of individuals tonight have used the acronym and then spelled it out. And that's good for me, but it's also good for the wider audience, I think, who's trying to understand what goes on here. And so I want to thank you and everybody else who understands that the audience is larger than just the educational community here on campus, and thank you for that.
But we'll try not to invent any more acronyms.
Yeah, don't make promises.
Mark, you got a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I just might add that on fractional ADA, the average daily attendance, there is a, there are two legislators that plan to bring legislation in this coming session that I've read drafts of that will split that out because, as it stands now, if a student attends up to a half-day, the district gets a full share, if you will. They get the, they get the full payment for the student coming. Then in our case, where we have a number of students who are attending a number of classes here, they don't actually set foot on the campus. And so it's not the colleges or universities pushing for that, but some of the legislators are looking at the funding that's going in. It's, but there will be some funding attached to that through students come first if it survives in November.
Yeah, that was something we were discussing is, you know, there's got to be funding for this, so we need to be able to track that funding and get it directed towards us so that we're not either causing the student to cover it twice, you know? They're getting the funding from ADA and then paying it out of their own pocket, too.
Correct. If a student chooses to go with a private provider, for example, there has to be funding. It goes to the, to the school, and then the school is responsible through the student to make that, you know? They would make the appropriation back to the private company, but there is some appropriation attached to that, and that's why those legislators are looking at that because they don't want to over-appropriate.
Perfect. Thank you. Judy?
Thing about that funding, then, one of the issues is the student pays the funding, the school district does not.
Depends on the school district.
Oh, now we have another layer in here. Well, and I think that highlights what we all struggle with as a board, and that is funding all these things and the unfunded mandates, and yet meeting the needs of the community. And so we're going to have to, I think, as a board, keep helping our legislators understand what the consumer, what our students want, deserve, need, and their taxpayers, they think have paid for it, and yet there's more to it than just the first round.
And I think what Mark's saying is if you have a student that's not a district student, that money may not come from the district. It may come from their liquor taxes.
Tony?
So, because there's that other layer of funding that sometimes, and that's another thing we're starting to look at because there's a lot of counties upside down that, because that $500 has not changed since 1982.
That's the, the $500 is what an out-of-Cootenay County, our district, student who would come and take classes here has their county from which they came sends that money to us, the college, to help pay for that student being here because those taxpayers haven't paid like Cootenay County has.
Right, but that, that funding comes from the state liquor distribution that goes to the county, and then the county has to parcel it out to, for those out-of-district students. So it becomes a very difficult situation, particularly if you have a county that does not receive a large liquor distribution and, but you have a large amount of students that are going to a college that's out of district. And so you have some counties in this state that are upside down in terms of funding coming in and the amount going out. And as Chairman Arman mentioned, this formula has not been addressed since 1982.
That's enough to drive you to drink, isn't it?
Mr. Chair, I just had a question, actually, probably for Gray, since he's the, he's got the latest data from CSI. When we talk about students, maybe that come on campus that maybe would pay a little bit more rather than the, being on their home school, I would just like to know what the impact has been on their programs at CSI since they've changed that fee schedule, and how has it impacted students? Years ago, when I was on the local K-12 board, we actually helped pay for some of that cost, and of course, times changed and budgets didn't allow for that, and now the total cost is borne by the student. So what has been the impact on the students would be my question.
Do you know, actually, the model at CSI has primarily been off-campus all along. That when they made that change and costing it out, the majority, and I think it's about 95% of their classes are taught at CSI off-campus, and that's been the model all along. That's quite opposite of NIC's model right now, where obviously, I believe it's 85% are taught here on campus and only 15% on campus. So they didn't really go through a change that way, but we anticipate that we will, and that's why we're working with the school districts to prepare for that together.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Good report. Great information, everybody. I mean, both constituents and executive reports, once again, it just proves how much, much goes on in this institution. It's amazing. Okay, second reading, old business, tab one, Beth Ann Fuller. The second reading of the act is an action item, Head Start, Job Descriptions, Personnel Policies, Recruitment and Enrollment and Prioritization and Selection Criteria.
Thank you, Chairman Arman and fellow trustees, President Dunlap. I'm here tonight for our second reading of NIC Head Starts. Like you said, job descriptions, personnel policies, recruitment and enrollment policy, which also includes our criteria for prioritization of families. I'm also here to inquire if there are any other additional questions or information that you might need for this second reading.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Kristi.
I think that we, I don't have any questions. I don't know if anybody else does, but I thought Beth Ann was very thorough in her presentation last month, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the attachments A through D that she has prepared for us.
Is there a second?
I have a second to that motion.
So it's been second, motion and second to approve job descriptions, attachment A, attachment B, personnel policies, attachment C, recruitment and enrollment policy, and attachment D, prioritization and selection policy. Any discussion? Yes, Ken?
Beth Ann, I appreciate you coming back. I know it probably seems like sometimes a silly thing, but this has given us an opportunity, and me in particular. I went back through in light of some of the comments that you made, the material that you provided, and it helped me understand, I think, better the, some of the changes that were being requested by your governing board. And so I appreciate the opportunity to have a little bit more time to consider your presentation or the, your request in the light of your presentation. It also, I think, the time gives us an opportunity for the public, if there were questions, or if there were some questions from some interested party, to raise them. And so I, I'm somewhat apologetic because I think I was the one that didn't want to do this on first reading, but there are reasons for that, and I think in the long run, they serve a good purpose. But I wanted to explain to you why we did it, but kind of going ahead and approving it because I don't think there are any further questions. Thank you.
See no further, Judy?
Just an observation, it's a reminder again of all the things that the community college does and partners. Here's another agency with whom we partner that we are, in fact, responsible to work with. And so we cover from Head Start to area and aging, so we, in fact, really are a community college. We cover full life spectrum here.
True. Any other discussion? Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, it's passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry we didn't...
New business, first reading on a prairie property easement. Mr. Lyons.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, President Dunlap, just a little history here, as you, as the board knows, and many here in the audience may know. North Idaho College owns approximately 40 acres on the Rathrum Prairie, that property that joins K-Tech property. Both properties were annexed into the city of Rathrum last year. The board has approved that annexation agreement. The annexation agreement provides for future cooperation and contemplates certain easements and rights of way that are necessary for the development, not just of NIC property but the K-Tech property as well. K-Tech has requested easements for utilities along the property boundary. You have copies of those drawings for the easement in your, in your board packet. That easement for, for the utilities is consistent with the annexation agreement. Both K-Tech and NIC are, is proposed, will grant reciprocal easements for access from Lancaster Road onto both properties at the boundary where the two properties come together. That also is consistent with the annexation agreement. It's not particularly specified, but the annexation agreement does contemplate cooperation on those, and frankly, in discussions with the engineers, that is the logical place to provide an access there, at least that's, that's the recommendation that they make. Brad Marshall of JUB, who has assisted all parties, including NIC, with the original development and the annexation, has reviewed the easements, prepared the drawings that were included. So at this point, we're requesting the, a motion authorizing the board chair and the president to execute the easements. The easements have been prepared and been reviewed by council from all parties and by the engineers. So that's, that's, that's the request. So, that's, that's, that's the requested action on this proposal. Any questions?
Discussion for Mark.
Do we want to do a motion first, or?
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
My, or second?
Discussion.
Mark, I see three diagrams here reflecting the easements. The, the two reflecting the shorter easements, I guess, are, yeah, there's some, one on each, each piece, parcel of property, both the K-Tech property.
Yes, K-Tech is going to, is going to grant an easement to NIC. NIC is going to grant an easement to K-Tech. We don't need an easement over our own property, but the purpose of those reciprocal easements is to, is to grant a, what is effectively a 46-foot wide easement for joint access.
Yeah, and I understand that from, from looking at the diagrams. I guess my question was, the third diagram is just a singular easement, apparently for access for utilities, and whose property is that on?
It's actually on NIC's property, and that was part of the proposal in the annexation agreement.
So, do we have a reciprocal easement from K-Tech for utilities? I know we don't need one on our property if the utilities are on our property, but I'm, I, I guess I'm wondering, why is that all on our property?
It was, it was agreed in, as part of the annexation negotiations and discussions a year ago, and, and the way that was approved was the utility easement would be on the NIC property on that side, would serve both, both properties. NIC has a 40-acre wide property, K-Tech has a 20-acre property, narrower, and that was, that was some of the considerations that went into, into that discussion.
The, I guess my last question is, are there already utilities in place, and this is really reflecting, doing what needs to be done to make it legal?
Well, I haven't actually gone out there and inspected it. The answer is yes. School is in operation, so I'm sure there's utilities. Any other discussion?
Judy.
Just thinking, Ken, is your point, if utilities were to come from the east side to come across to, to provide for us, I think what happened here was the utilities were coming from the west side and therefore across. But now, taking your idea, if the util, if there were some occasion where something, some water line or something came from the east side, we, are we sure that we would then be able to have that water line, whatever, utility line, cross our partner, pieces of land to reach us?
From these, well, and I.
Am I just doing the worst-case scenario?
I understand this. The city of Rathrum's longer-term plan here is to have a, a major sewer line along the, which would effectively be on the southern border of these properties.
Southern border.
Southern border, eventually. Right now, the, the utilities are coming from the Lancaster Road section area.
Which is nowhere to an end.
Ultimately, long-range plan is to have a major sewer line that to serve the, the development of this entire area, to, to run along the southern border. So, if easements are going to be necessary on this, the discussions that we had a year ago, were not, were not that they would be coming across properties, but they would be coming along borders. And that's one of the reasons that these borders were established that way and proposed.
Other questions? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Thank you, Mark. Next up is a Tab 3, North Idaho College Beach Annexation Proposal. Mr. Lyons, you're up again.
Okay, thank you. I'll just continue along here. Again, a little history on this. North Idaho College owns that beach property between, on the other side of Rosenberry, the Dyke Road, on the water side, between River and Hubbard. This, this is about 5.3 acres, and it is currently in the county as opposed to the city of Coeur d'Alene. It is county-zoned as industrial. Earlier this year, an application was, was made to annex the beach property into the city of Coeur d'Alene. That, that request was, was started by NIC, and the reasons that that was started was there was some symmetry involved to have the same governmental entity have jurisdiction over, that has jurisdiction over the entire campus, also over the beach property. There were, there were considerations of using, having the same law enforcement jurisdiction over the area. Now, the, the city planning commission and the city council have actually approved an ordinance to annex this property in the city of Coeur d'Alene as R17 zone property. That would be consistent with the NIC property across the road. Now, this annexation is not complete and is subject to North Idaho College and city of Coeur d'Alene agreeing to the terms of an annexation agreement. This is before this board, so that the board can consider the pluses and minuses of annexation and give, if the board wishes to, direction to the administration to, to consider continuing discussions with the city of Coeur d'Alene over what the, whether this property is appropriate to be annexed, and whether, if so, what the terms of any annexation agreement would be. I've gone through some of the pluses. There are some pluses, there are some minuses. We talked about, city rules can be, and can, a little more restrictive in some areas. There is some logic to having city law enforcement here because it is more available. On the annexation agreement, the city may be proposing to use cer, to have the property available for certain uses that we're not using now. Those are the kind of things that, that are the discussions that NIC would have with the city over term, potential terms of the annexation agreement. Now, having said that, let me say, and my view is that agreeing to annexation is not one of the critical issues before the college at this time, but I believe it should be something that the board should consider and discuss, and determine whether the board wants to go forward with this. So, that's my presentation on this. Any questions?
Mark, Judy.
And thinking about the annexation and the geography here, what I heard you say, and I didn't happen to see it in our background material, is the beach area that we're talking about is from River, which runs up and, and then for the folks on the other campus, turns left and goes along.
River south along the Spokane River until it becomes Lake Coeur d'Alene, and then from there, it runs east.
Right.
To Hubbard, where Hubbard would cross Rosenberry or.
Because then I thought I heard you say it was beach area from River North up towards the wastewater treatment plant. Whose beach is that?
Well, that, that is North Idaho College's, but that is.
Already.
Already annexed into the city of Coeur d'Alene. It's, if you go down there and look at it, it's not so much beach area. The beach area actually begins as you head south when you get to River.
More public use of that currently owned by the college.
Doesn't have sheet piling there, so.
Ken.
My concern with the annexation issue is one that, I guess, when you look at a map, it just instantly presents the argument, just the map, that this, this is silly to have this little strip in the county. But then, when you start thinking about it, as you do about most things, the devil's in the details, as they say. And I, I guess your suggestion is that the board simply approve a motion to authorize the administration to do further investigation and engage in further discussions about this annexation agreement. Is that right?
Yes, I think, I think that would be appropriate. And then, and then report back to the board as things sort of flesh out.
Is there any time limit? Is there any timeframe in which we need to do, perform these acts?
Well, let me say, generally, I haven't looked at this specifically, but generally, when we have engaged in annexation discussions on other properties with the city of Coeur d'Alene, it's my understanding that we have about one year to reach an agreement.
From now?
Now, I will defer to the Coeur d'Alene city attorney on that, but that's my recollection.
And it went before the, let's see, it went before planning and zoning this spring, and when did it go before the city?
I actually have, have a copy of it in my book over there. If you want me to tell you that, I'll go get it. But it was, it was a few months ago that it was. So, my recollection, as I said, I think it was June, July, in that area.
That's, that's fair. Okay. Other questions for Mark?
Ron?
I'd make a motion that, that the administration move forward with discussion and negotiations, but report back to the board before they make any final decisions.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Ken, you made a second. Any more discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I would, I would simply ask that, and I guess the administration's the one that I ought to make this request to, is that when we look at this, rather than just come back with a proposed document or something, that we have a, arguments on both ends of why we ought to do it. So, we have something to look at in terms of making our decision, rather than just some document. And I'm sure that in the process of discussions, there are going to be arguments from different people with regard to different things, and I'd like to know the context of those, so that when we're finally asked to make a decision, we have the context of those discussions and concerns before us. Thank you.
And I would add, the long-term picture of what, where do the ripples go? Not just how it works now, but we work so hard on assembling land here that we want to be sure it's assembled for long-term usage.
Other discussion?
If not, board chair report. The only thing I have is, obviously, like I stated earlier, is one of the three board chairs of the community colleges in Idaho. We are trying to get a date set to get together and start looking at items that might come up for the legislature in 2013. The only other thing I have is that I was actually, had the privilege of being on campus last Saturday, not because of somebody being crazy things, but I came down and went to Carmen, and I, I had never been to an opera before. And my first experience of opera was fantastic. You did not get a chance to see Carmen, you really missed out. It was amazing. And, and one of the special things about that is Max Mendez, one of our own instructors, not only performed in it, but he directed the choir. Most of the choir, most of the orchestra were local people. It was amazing. If you get a chance again, if they have another opera here, I will not miss it. And I'm, I'm an opera buff now, so.
You're probably be getting a request for a donation in the mail now.
I thought, I never thought I would say that, but I did.
That's right.
With that, that's the end of my report. Our remarks for the go-to-the-order. Anybody have any remarks? Going once, going twice? All I would like to say is, once again, thank you for your reports tonight. Great reports, great things going on. Congratulations to all of you for so much going on. I mean, we're less than a month into school, and you guys are about a month into school, and you guys are just rocking. So, congratulations. We'll see you a month from now. We're adjourned.